Charter officer reviews. I've already done mine. I did it one-on-one with each of the charter officers. It was a two-way street conversation. I gave Ms. Vock my copies and I don't know if she, well, knowing Ms. Vock, she's passed them out already. The most interesting response I got back, because it was supposed to be a two-way conversation, of course, was that some of the instructions that we give the council are somewhat nebulous sometimes. So...
Some of council's instructions, you mean, to the charter officers?
Yeah. Councils to the charter officers are sometimes somewhat vague.
And say, why aren't they asking us to clarify it? If you don't understand the direction, why aren't you asking the question?
Well, I'm just, let's not shoot the messenger or the charter officers.
I'm not. I'm just saying that this is, you know, part of the discussion. I mean, yeah, we both, communications both ways.
I took it as positive feedback. We need to be sure and make sure that they're definitive instructions to the charter officers.
That we're as clear as concise as possible.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have the, has, would you like to, have you done yours, Tracy?
I have done mine myself, but I was misunderstood about the evaluation process. I had thought that we were all filling out the same form and then we were going to come in here and kind of talk about it. I didn't realize that we were...
That's what we're here. We can do, we can do exactly that. If you have some issues with one or two of them that you'd like to enlighten us with, go right ahead.
And if I have any issues, but a few comments I would like to share publicly and I will provide these, my written comments to the charter officers. I'd say, Mr. O'Connor, I am so impressed with your representation of our city, with your time and your dedication to the many events in the city, professional organizations, businesses. You have made yourself and your lovely wife so available to the public that they always feel they have a chance to be heard. Your responsiveness has been absolutely outstanding. And I want you to know how much I appreciate you standing with the, through the negotiations with FPL, through all the nightmares of coordinating that. And I think you've done an exceptional job.
Thank you.
Jim, I also would like to commend you when you were not only interviewed, but also immediately after your hire, you and I sat down and we discussed some of my goals and what I felt was so important to the city. And one of the main things that I charged you with was to be, as Pilar mentioned, a community liaison for not only economic development with the Chamber of Commerce, with our business community, backing up our tourism partners throughout the city, and our discussions, be that as they may have been, with the county. And I commend you on all of the work and the just inordinate amount of hours. In fact, you and I have had a discussion that I personally feel at some point in the future you need help with that because you are, I'm concerned that you are spending so much time on these aspects that it may take away from the time for the management of all of the employees under you as well. And that is, of course, something we can look at in the future for how that would be structured. But I do appreciate the amount of hours and the amount of time that you have given to these exterior needs within our city, as well as, you know, the time of what your real job is, which is managing the rest of the city.
The real job. The real job.
Well, Jim was kind enough to comment upon my comments about, whoops.
Jim was kind to comment about my comments about him, and I think we had a good dialogue. It came down to one thing, as I think you all probably know. I was trained as, early on, as a microeconomist, and I am a, I'm a detail person. In other words, I...
We hadn't noticed.
I'll go into a lot of detail, and I'm sorry for that. And it sometimes obscures the real world. And my only comment with Jim is just be sure I always know the detail. The one that I'll give as an example, it wasn't Jim's fault, but, you know, the meeting, I think it was in June, where we got, at 6:14 at night, you know, we got the thing from the transactional attorney. I would have had Jim call me. Luckily, at 7:12, found out I had the damn thing. And so that's, that's what I would have Jim do, is be sure that I know. And I try, like the things we dealt with today, if I didn't like them or I had an objection, I try to tell Jim upfront, I didn't do a very good job on water sewer, but, or electric, I didn't. But I try to tell them what I'm going to do because I think that's only fair. I don't deal that directly with Cindy, but I think Jim does a good job. I have no problem with that, and that's my only comment, really. And you can comment back. You can say that I'm driving you nuts or whatever.
I have a couple discussion items that I'd like to discuss with you, based on your 730-13 goals and objectives. Number five, you state that you would like to continue to refine and improve the employee performance appraisal process. Four of us here were on the council when that was initiated a few years ago. But I haven't heard a lot of feedback back on that up until now, on how that's going. Has it resulted in any definitive decisions made on employees, which has resulted in budgetary modifications, et cetera? What good is the employee performance appraisal process doing after two years of implementation here in the city?
From my perspective in conversations I've had with department directors, it has been very positive. It's been one of those, that they've really been able to sit down with the employee, go over the issues. Now, this is not 100% across the board, but most of the department directors. It also gives them a basis, not for budgetary issues, and it has not had an impact on budget at all, except when we've had separation. But it really has given that time where the department director sat down with employees, talked about their shortcomings, and I think it's been effective on that end. We still need to do more refinements, which we will continue to do as the process goes on, and that will help us in those total evaluations. But I think we've been doing it about 18 months, I believe, now. So we're getting it through our first couple of years. I think there's been comments on how we refine the document itself, and it, I think it's been a positive overall for everyone.
Okay. The second thing that I wanted to discuss with is, in terms of economic development within our city, we still have a significant amount of under or unutilized business development properties on 17th Street, on US1 throughout the corridor through our city. We're seeing some unoccupancy rates even on the beach side, unoccupancy on Royal Palm Point. One of the things that I would like to see added to your goals and objectives is if the city manager's offices, office could help to continue to ensure that our city departments themselves and the city staff, that you spend effort on decreasing the barriers to bringing businesses into our community, because there are just an inordinate, a lot, I'll use that word, a lot of benefits to our city of filling these unoccupied buildings with tax-paying businesses, not only in our business tax receipts, but the increase in utilities, and the families having jobs within our community. So it's just where, as you think just getting somebody into those properties, you know, would just benefit in one way, they, it trickles down throughout our entire community. So, again, looking at economic development and making sure that our city departments are not placing barriers into development or redevelopment of those properties.
The best thing we can do for economic development is complete the sale to FPL and have 30% lower utility rates. Talk to any small business person, that 30% goes straight from their bottom line. If you can, you can return that to those businesses, you're going to help try to fill those buildings.
Some of the areas that you all pass subordinates, have been as much more flexibility in planning that has also helped us in trying to address getting those in. We've also been working in our deposit and the, how the customer service operates to make us a little more uniform and also competitive in doing that. So we're taking some steps and trying to work with the small business. We've had a couple of rocky roads. We have some small businessmen that seem to bounce from building to building, and it looks like they're occupying, but they leave a trail of bad utility bills under a different company name. But once you get across some of those, I think that we have opened up a lot of windows. And I've received several people that have appreciated what we've been doing on that.
I've had some members of the community that have asked me, you know, why has it been taking so long to get, you know, the development of, for instance, Bonefish Grill and that property, and why is it taking so long to get other things? I just want to make sure that we're not, as a city, placing barriers to development, as if, in fact, the 17th Street and Indian River Boulevard property moves forward, that could be a significant boon to our entire city and our community. So that is one area, as well as at our airport. We've been looking at a number of different methodologies to increase economic development out there. And I want to make sure that our city staff, planning departments, is not putting barriers up, that we're open for business.
We are. We're really trying to break down all that. Coming back to the discussion we had about the airport, we are trying to work with our tenants, and the Chamber of Commerce is involved in some of that conversation as well. How do we make our leases much more compatible, that it's not just a cookie-cutter lease to make it work? I will tell you, when I first came here, one of the issues the airport had, and it was given by direction of city councils in the past, you can't be out there competing with the private sector. Well, the problem with that is, is that we are competing with the private sector. This is ground that we have that have tried to bring in business. And there was a hesitancy to try to structure how you could sit down and work with the tenants as they come forward. And I think that was the overlying, but you all have sent a very clear message. You want to have occupancy in those buildings, how to make that work, and so we are trying to do that.
And you and I sat down with the Chamber of Commerce officials, and we met with the former director of the airport in Fort Myers. I know, where was it?
I can't, I can't remember. I know it's a...
Anyway, one of the other major, Melbourne, Melbourne Airport.
Yeah, Melbourne, Melbourne.
And he gave us some very good ideas in terms of increasing economic development at the airport. So, thank you for that. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else have any comments for the city manager?
All in all, Jim, it has been a pleasure to work with you. Selam have I seen, I had the privilege of working with a more professional person.
Moving on to the city attorney.
Before y'all move on, if there are any issues or concerns, if people will just let me know, you know, Craig, it's sort of like when you and I talked, you'd had me down low on training or education, and I explained to you to keep my credentialing with ICMA, I have to do so many hours of work. And as Dick indicated, he and I sort of sat down and went over the issues as well, so worked through some of those. But please feel free to let me know.
Once again, does that pass your mind if you have any questions or, yeah, in regards to any comments that I've made as well? Please let me know.
One thing that I find useful, and I only say it just for the record, every Friday morning at 10 o'clock, Jim and I sit down, unless I'm traveling to my job someplace or some other, Jim is out of town. And I have found it most useful, so over the last, you know, 18 months or whatever, I guess we, we've probably met 60 times. And it helps me a great deal, and I guess with my personality, but I recommend the procedure, you know, every two weeks or whatever. I think it's useful. It's useful to me. I'm not sure Jim enjoys it. Well, and I do, and it's, we don't need to have a set agenda. And Dick will usually come in with all the papers that Tammy's put in his box for that week, and, you know, he'll throw some of those around. But I think that sit-down and talking is very, and Pilar, you call me every so often, and sometimes I catch Craig in his office when an issue comes up. Tracy gets me a call. And Jay, I know you stick your head in all the time, and unfortunately, I'll have four or five people in the office, and we just seem to conflict more, never conflict more than anything else. And maybe if we could set a time, that might be the key in the response to that.
I sat down with the city attorney also, as I mentioned. The only comment that I had that was...
Yeah, it's hot seat.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to talk over our shoulders, though.
Under number five, communications, communicates with the city council, public department heads, and in the professional, effective manner. Demonstrates the ability to select, organize, and present effective presentations with comprehensive backup in terms of the general public can understand. The last part of the comprehensive backup in terms of the general public can stand, understand, I, I'll read exactly what I put down under comments on my comment sheet for you, Wayne. Your subject matter has a particular challenge to me as an engineer, where I look for a specific yes or no scientific answer. And I suppose my concerns are a product of my own personal background. And I think that's, if I, it's the thing that Pilar and I were just talking about, or we were just talking about, if we don't give definitive instructions, we can't hardly expect definitive answers. So I guess in the future, what I need to do, this is a two-way issue, what I need to do is to come to you personally, if I feel that you haven't given me the definitive answer that I'm looking for. And it's by product of what you do, it's going to be difficult.
Certainly. We work with words, not numbers.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I say here. It's, I suppose it's a concern, or a product of my personal background. But I'll try and come to you more often with issues if I, if I don't quite like or agree with your comments.
Certainly. And you always, you always do, as many of you do, just let me know if there's, there's an issue. Obviously, as city attorney, it's serving the organization. We don't deal much at all with the public, so it's internal to the organization. So it's whatever comes up. But if anyone wants a regular meeting, such as with the city manager, I'm certainly available for that, too, to go over things that are perking along.
One of the things I have down here is, under responses, is one of the things that I grade you on is, and your responses to my questions have always been in a timely manner and professional manner, and well-prepared with backup, the support that I need, because I'll come in and ask you a question, and you'll go, "Well, you didn't read the whole thing, Craig." But you are always well-prepared with backup, and I really appreciate that part of it, because none of us all are legalese experts. Your communication skills tie into two different, two different places, of course, how you communicate with the, with the public and how you communicate with, with us. And probably equally important are the public communications, because we don't want to leave them out in the open.
Yeah, so we have very little communications with the public. We'll occasionally have someone ask a question, but nine times out of 10, we have to refer them to a private attorney, because they think the city attorney can be their attorney.
Ah, I see where you're going.
We have to advise them otherwise. Or they're calling for something criminal, and we send them to the state attorney. But we have very little contact with the, directly with the public. It's more with other attorneys that are dealing with the city.
Under, under legal, demonstrates the command and knowledge of the law pertaining to municipalities, the state of Florida, county, and the city. I gave you a five on that, and I have always been impressed with how quickly you can come up with a response for me on, on those issues. Well-versed in all issues there, and thank you very much for that. The other that I, really important to me is that, that all the, all the charter officers respect the sovereignty of the other charter officers. I don't like, it really gets me upset if the charter officers get into a tiff, because they, it's usually over something that shouldn't be in their, their agenda anyway. But you do very well, I gave you a five on that, recognizes sovereignty of other charter officers, and maintains a good working relationship with those offices. And I couldn't think of anybody that does it better, other than maybe Tammy.
And I have to thank Tammy and Jim, because all three of us mesh and work together quite well.
Yeah, you have. Over the years, I've noticed that you guys, I put it in here somewhere in one of yours, it sounds trite, but you get along well with people. And that's, that's very important in your job, very, very important. Anyone else have something they'd like to add?
Well, yeah, I would. The first thing is, the areas I didn't grade you as high, and I'll have to take responsibility. For one, I, I talk to Tammy a couple of times a week, and I talk to Jim a couple, but formally once. You and I need to raise something where I talk to you more often.
Sure.
Because I downgrade you on that, and that's a good part, in good part, that's my fault. And we can go over these in a little more detail when we do it the first time.
Sure.
The other thing is, of these 12 things here, I have a, one that I think is a lot more important than others. I don't know anything about the law, but I believe in getting things done and problem-solving. And the way I feel about that, I just feel from time to time, well, we can't do this yet because, or there's a legal risk, or we want to stay out of court. And you've heard me say it, and I'll say it again, I think our job is to have our code and our position as good as we can, but if we have to go to court, our job is not to stay out of court if we have to protect our citizens. I just don't believe that. And so I, it's a prejudice I have that you'll just have to deal with, but we have to...
Well, I might be able to clear it up a little.
Okay.
First of all, I'm sworn to uphold the constitution, both the state and the federal constitution. If we have, and I know what you're talking about, if we have a particular code provision that can't be supported, I can't give advice to the enforcement arm of the city that, yeah, you should go ahead and do that. And it just so happens, I received recently, I get headhunter stuff all the time, and one of the jobs listed was for a corporate counsel for a particular organization. And one of the job, part of the job description was, and one of the requirements was, to be able to anticipate and guard against legal risks involving the organization. And you'll never guess what that company was.
Unilever.
No. It's the company that owns FPL.
Oh, my gosh.
They recognize, I mean, that's one of my, your prime jobs as an in-house counsel, is to keep you out of court. So we have a little, I'm in the legal profession, and I know that's part of my duty. So I will never, and I, and actually, the issue we know we're talking about, I advise Tim, Tim, if you want to go ahead and enforce that, we'll defend it the best we can.
Well, I, you know...
But, but we're working on that, and coming before you is going to be some updates to more properly enforce that.
The quid pro quo on that is exactly what you said. If you do not believe that we can enforce what we have, or it should be enforced, then if it, if it shouldn't be enforced, then you need, I need to know that. And if it should be enforced, but we have a flaw, I need to know that, because it's no different than Tracy and I keep pushing the credit card with Cindy. I mean, we need credit cards across the city. And in this case, we're, without getting into the issue, I don't think it's important, we know it. But I, you know, I'm bound to determine some of these issues. We'll get the code right, and we'll enforce them. That's just, that's who I am.
And let me throw one thing. See, I can't enforce the code. That's why you have code enforcement officers.
I understand.
In fact, under state law, I can't even help prosecute those cases. I can either represent the board, or I can prosecute. I can't do both. So...
But I, you know, I hear from, it's not, this is the conversation, because Jim's not sitting here. Well, you know, it's between, it's between Tim and Wayne. I don't care. Let's resolve it and go on to the next step. So...
I can help with the policy, but I can't help with the enforcement.
Okay, but if, if, if there's a place that, there's something I'm interested in, either convince me I'm wrong, or if I need to go to somebody, if I need to go to Jim or Tammy or whoever it is, or I don't care, somebody outside the system, I'm perfectly happy to do that.
No, I know your concern, and we, I did help get that addressed.
So, I mean, that's, but I think the first thing, we'd be better if we talked more frankly.
Sure. Tracy, you have any issues?
I do have a couple of things. Sorry, Beth. I have a couple of things I just wanted to bring up. One question that I have in regard to your office as it will be going forward is to delineate responsibility. When I come into the door, I believe you're still going to have an open door to the council members.
Sure.
But I want to know what topics I should go to the right and which topics should go to the left when I walk in your door there.
You can always, you can always come to, you can always come to me.
Would you rather, would you, and then you can feed us to Peggy?
Absolutely. Unless, unless I'm out of the office, then Peggy hopefully will be there.
Because I like to go talk to Peggy.
Yeah.
All right, so...
You can still do that.
Then we can just go to you. I just want, I just want to make sure that we're not stepping on any...
No, not at all. And if it's something that, that will take some legal work, I mean, then that's, Peggy and I will get together, and we decide, well, who's going to work on this. And something she could deal with more quickly if her plate isn't as full, and vice versa, so.
And I think both your plates are always full.
Yeah, they're always full.
And I do thank you, both you and Ms. Vock, because between myself and the two of you, we all worked together on getting the resolutions for the invocations at the meetings and for the proclamations. So we, again, symbiosis between all of us, to have that come out. One of the things on your identifiable goals and projects you mentioned is a city attorney's office manual. Is that something that's never been done before? There was no delineation of exactly what everybody's roles and responsibilities and...
Well, we have job descriptions, but those are maintained really by HR department. And in fact, they'll need some updating because of changes. But no, there's never really been an operations-type manual, which is something I had hoped to get to by this point. But Catherine has worked on it some, but nowhere near completion. I mean, we're just, quite frankly, we're just all very busy. And, but one of the points is, is so that someone can look at, well, how do I do this? And you look in the manual and say, oh, okay, this is how I do it. And that's going to become even more important. So...
Of course it will. I mean, we can't just respond back tribal knowledge as it's passed down from everyone else. So that's, that's important. And then, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you have anything?
I guess I was a bit perplexed under general objectives. When we were doing our search for our city attorney, we had added in the job description that the city attorney was going to review the outside legal counsel costs and review those. And I see here that you've got it deleted, and I'm not sure why. And the job description that was circulated to me was one from 2006. And like I said, I know when we were out searching for a city attorney, we had revised that position description.
Well, what comes into play is the person I have that, and typically, as I've said before, the only outside counsel we've typically dealt with in my office is defense counsel on claims. And Catherine is the person that I depend upon, because she's the go-between between me and the outside counsel.
Have you not been intimately involved with the actions with, or the transactions on FPL with...
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Certainly, that's an outside counsel cost to be reviewed. That certainly should be under your authority.
Well, I look at those bills, and then I pass them on to Jim. That is, I don't know what they're doing from day to day. This is the problem. You don't know unless you're intimately working on that matter. What are they doing? I don't know if their bills are accurate or not. So all I can do is review them if anything sticks out.
Use your, use your legal experience, because you also have, you come from a special background of experience that none of us would have in reviewing those, and that it's reasonable, you know, that's a reasonable amount of time for that kind of discussion or for that kind of issue, or if there's some other direction that we should be going, what we could be doing to save money with it. I mean, once again, this is, yeah.
Well, I do that with, with those bills from Mr. Igo and Mr. Miller, and advise Jim. In fact, we have had discussions with John Igo early on about some of the billings that we didn't quite agree with. And we've done that, and I would continue to do that because I am, you know, somewhat involved in, in that process that we're going through with them. But the other outside counsel, typically, it's just been the defense counsel. And that's where, especially once insurance takes over those defense duties, I'll have no contact really with those attorneys. So I'll have no way to, and they'll be billing, of course, to the insurance company, or they could even be in-house insurance defense counsel. We don't know. So that's one of the reasons that was struck. If I don't have knowledge, like I do have somewhat knowledge of what's going on with the FPL transaction, at least I can, in that case, I can at least look at them and know if, well, wait a minute, this doesn't really look right, and we will raise issues with it. But, but otherwise, if I don't have knowledge, I can't, it's tough to review it.
I just do. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Just real briefly, I mean, Wayne, I think you've done an excellent job. I mean, I've always said, a good attorney is one that tells you what you should know, not what you want to hear. You know, there's a lot of things that I come in with, with ideas on how things would work, and you set me straight on them. So I appreciate it. But you've always been accessible. So it's, it's the one thing I really like, is I know where I can get you, and you've always had time to answer the questions, no matter how off the wall they may, may be at times. But I greatly appreciate it, and I, I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you. And as Jim had said, anybody that wants to, whether it be a regular or at any point you'd like to chat with me, or I'll come see you, I'm certainly available.
I do appreciate it. You're available to respond. Thank you.
And in closing, on my comments, in closing, I want to tell you that your credibility of your office has taken a major step up since the last couple of years. You've done a damn fine job on that.
Thank you, sir.
You have any comments for us? Please do the same thing as we do to you.
Okay. Wait a minute, let me get out... Wait a minute, let me get out my review forms.
I know you've come in and closed my door a couple of times, said, Fletcher, we need to talk, son.
I try to be gentle.
No, you didn't. Yeah. We really appreciate your work.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Vok, you want to join us?
Do you have a choice?
Can we turn the spotlight on up here?
Don't worry about the electric cables dangling from the...
Yeah, where were you on the night of the...
One of the things that I always told Ms. Vok, and it's always, she is the face of the city to the public in many, many cases, and I gave her a five on that, because all the people that walk through this door that want so many things that we don't actually do, you have to guide them to the right office, and you treat them with courtesy and respect, and that's, that's the face of the office. I'm always pleasantly surprised to hear about you going to another one of your jobs for some more training, but even as important, if not more important, you make sure that your staff takes the training also. When I was working with McDonnell Douglas, one of the first things my, when I went into management, one of the first things my manager told me was, "Your job is to find someone and train someone to replace you, otherwise I won't promote you." And that's really, really important in your job. It's so important that everybody knows what everybody else is doing in the office, so I commend you on that. On records, there just is no one better. Thank you very much. Under general comments, I put simply a true professional in all sense of the word from the staff and yourselves, subtle but firm control will work every time, and even when I'm going in and wondering something, she'll say, "Now, Craig, you might not want to do that," but she has a way of being kind to you when you want to go down the wrong path, and it's just simply a fine, fine job, Tammy. I appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would just like to say that I'd like, when you're preparing your goals, that you prepare those against measurable standards.
Yep.
Sure. I guess this is, what, year three, I guess, of working with you, and goodness gracious, I think lots of, lots of issues, lots of things have come and gone. I can't imagine the number of years that you've had to put up with people like us and the variety of different council persons that have come and gone through the years, and you've still kept a pretty darn good character. So, you know, I think you're, I think you're first-rate in your field, and I think we're pretty lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Balancing five politically figures is not anything, and you do it well.
I would just like to touch on your work in the community. I think you're an excellent representative of the city of Arrow Beach, throughout our community, at the nonprofit work you do, and the community events that you show up for and represent our city, but I just want to make sure that the residents of our city realize your statewide reputation you have within the city clerks statewide. I know my own mother-in-law worked 25 years for the city clerks department in plantation, and I know you must have met her someday.
I'm sure I have.
But all the conventions that she went to, and I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that we do have a great standing...
A leader in the field.
...from our city that you provide for us, and I just want to thank you on that.
Thank you.
And I gave Mrs. Vok all the same number, five. I've never done that before. That speaks worlds. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and you know that if you ever have any questions, just like Jim and Wayne said, my office is always open, but I see most of you anyway.
Thank you, Tammy.
She ran away fast, didn't she?
She has some questions.
Oh, here you go.
Is there any other business to come for the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn accepted. We are adjourned. Thank you.